Okay, let's start this meeting of the Town Council for May 26, 2016. If everyone could please stand to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, announcements. The town offices will be closed on Monday, May 30 for the observation of Memorial Day. The Memorial Day Parade is scheduled to begin at 11:00 a.m. on Monday, May 30, starting off at the Wright-Aide Plaza. The parade will head north onto Daniel Webster Highway, left on Babousek Lake Road into the Last Rest Cemetery, where they will hold a ceremony at the flag and monument. On Thursday, June 9, at 7:00 p.m., a regular council meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room. On Friday, June 10, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Sarek Conference Center, 229 Commerce Drive in Bedford, New Hampshire, we are going to have a Town Council Retreat Work Session. And on Thursday, June 23, at 7:00 p.m., again, another regular council meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Couple of other things I want to be able to add to these announcements. There is going to be a joint Town Council/School Board Meeting on June 14, here at 7:00 p.m. in the Matthew Thornton Room. And one of the things I want to be able to decide this evening, if possible, we usually have one meeting in July and one in August. And I gave normally what we've done is the third Thursday of those two months, hysterically, have been the dates that we've done it, which would be, if we go with that same pattern, would be July 21 and August 18. I would like to know what's the pleasure of the council, because we can make that announcement.
I'm good with that.
Jody, you're all set? How about you, Phil?
I think I'm fine.
Okay. So why don't we set that as an official announcement, that the one meeting in July will be July 21 at 7:00 p.m. here in the Matthew Thornton Room, and August 18 at 7:00 p.m. as well. The next regularly scheduled meeting would be September 8, so there is time between the August and September meetings, so that works out well. Eileen.
The supervisors of the checklist will be in session on Tuesday, May 31, from 7:00 to 7:30 p.m. to accept voter registration and party change applications for those wishing to change their party affiliation. This will be the last session for party changes until after the state primary being held on September 13. The filing period for the state's, the September state primary will run from June 1 through June 10. The Town Clerk's Office will accept filings for state representative and delegates to the Republican Convention. Delegates for the Democratic Convention are handled by the Democratic State Committee. Property tax bills have been mailed and are due on July 1, 2016. Property owners who have not received their tax bills should contact the Tax Collector's Office at (424) 3651 to arrange for a duplicate bill. Bills not paid by July 1 are subject to a 12% interest per annum. The library will be holding its June book sale on Saturday, June 4, and Sunday, June 5, with a Friends of the Library members-only pre-sale on Friday, June 3. See the library's website at www.merrimacklibrary.org for more information. Thank you.
Before we go any further, I do want to let anyone know that new business number four, the LED lighting discussion, is not going to be discussed this evening. It's going to be tabled. Paul is unable to be here this evening. So if anybody planned on coming in or here, I just want to let you know that early on. Okay. Okay, PFOA update. Eileen.
Okay. As, sorry, as most of us know, and it's kind of funny, because on the day when we got the announcement for the, from the EPA for the lifetime health advisory for the PFOA, we were at the luncheon for the DPW workers, and I went up to Kyle Fox, who's the DPW Director, and I go, "It's 70." Like, we were in the middle of a conversation. He had no idea what I was talking about. And I was thinking everybody was focusing solely on that, like I was.
And not everybody was.
And they were not. So, so they have, EPA has released their lifetime health advisory regarding PFOA, and it is 70 parts per trillion.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the information regarding the test results at the landfill, at the former landfill, the one that was closed many years ago behind the transfer, existing transfer station. There are currently nine monitoring wells that are in place. That's what happens when you have a closed landfill. You have to monitor the wells every year. So it was fairly easy for them to go in and test at these wells, to gather groundwater samples. So the nine of the 10 wells came back at more than 70 parts per trillion, the highest of which being 2,200 parts per trillion, which is very high. But I asked them for more information, because there's a great deal of difference between 70 and 2,200. So they came in at, one was 140, 140 parts per trillion, one was 150 parts per trillion. Keep in mind, we're comparing this to 70 now, 70 parts per trillion. 170 parts per trillion, 330 parts per trillion, 340 parts per trillion, 520 parts per trillion, 640 parts per trillion, 1,800 parts per trillion, and 2,200 parts per trillion. So during the conversation that we, every week we have a phone conference call with the Assistant Commissioner of DES, and he expressed an interest in having another town meeting type of thing here in Merrimack, to talk most specifically about the landfill and what the implications of the landfill testing will be done. At this point, what they're doing is they're going out about a half a mile, in a half a mile radius, and they're knocking on doors. If somebody has not been contacted, I believe that, although I haven't had it confirmed, it's from the landfill is the point, and then it goes out a half a mile each way, which kind of becomes difficult to look at, because there's 136 acres of that property, on that property. So, so anyway, the test results will be back in a couple of weeks, and...
So they've already tested some private wells?
They've tested many private wells.
Surrounding?
Yeah. And I've heard from several people and confirmed with the state whether or not they were inside or outside the half-mile limit, and at this time, the ones that have contacted me are outside the half-mile limit, way outside. So, so anyway, they have been out this, they were out this past weekend, I mean, last weekend, they were out on, like I said, Saturday, Sunday, Friday, trying to ascertain who has wells in the area and that kind of thing. So I'm assuming that the meeting that they want to have here is going to be revealing the numbers that they found at the wells. And I don't profess to be a scientist in this, this way, but the, apparently, when PFOA is, comes out in airborne fashion, it spreads out, obviously, far and wide. But when it's in groundwater, it's much more contained, as the, as we saw, or they saw in, in the town of Amherst, where they had a site that was leached, coming in from the lich field. It wasn't airborne, but it was coming into the groundwater from the ground into the water. It didn't go that far. It didn't go miles into, you know, mile and a half into Lichfield or anything like that. So the, they're thinking that the contamination area will be more...
Contained.
Contained than, obviously, what, what happened with the airborne material. So it was, it was, we also had the Town Manager of Bedford on the phone, and so, and Bedford, being also included in that area of the landfill, wanted to have a joint town meeting, and I said, "Well, that's probably fine, but I know my council will insist on it being in Merrimack. So as long as that's okay with you, I'm sure you can come." And he said he would check back with his council, and I said, "Well, if you can't, then you guys can have one, and we'll have one." So it should be in a couple of weeks, the famous two-week thing.
Yes. Jody.
You're talking about a joint meeting with the DES. This is the meeting that the DES wants to hold, right?
Yes, it's a town meeting. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's a town meeting.
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
That's what I thought I understood, but I just want to make sure everybody, it's clear. Thank you.
The only problem I see is I, I think they're wanting to isolate the topic to the landfill. Good luck with that.
Yeah.
Then, I mean, I think they should be realistic and know that there are people that are going to come that are interested, not, and we have no way of stopping, or should we, coming and coming up with other issues related to, other than landfill.
Right.
As long as he knows it.
So Becky has contacted the school to see if the same room is available at J Mews, and it being very accommodating, basically saying, "We'll move whatever sports event happens somewhere else that, whatever night that is."
As long as they know, yeah.
Yeah. So as soon as, as soon as we get that confirmed, I usually get it about five minutes before it hits the newspaper, literally. So get a phone call. Guess what? And I try and call all of you, and it's already, Bill Boyd's going, "I already read it in the patch." So, okay, so there's that. I don't want to bore everybody with too much in the way of details as far as the MBD wells are concerned, so I'm not going to get into what each well contains. Each of you council members has that. We'll also post it on the website.
It's also on the DES website, too, right?
It's on the DES website, yeah. So I got this from the MBD, who has their testing done through DES, so there, it's all coordinated. So currently, they are using well seven and well eight. Those are the two wells in the Hollis, the brand-new wells in the Hollis area. They now have to combine, in some fashion, PFOA with PFOS. So as you recall, PFOA and PFOS are under the umbrella of PFC. So, so anyway, so as I said, they now have to combine them. So were you to combine the totals of PFOA and PFOS in well eight, it would come to 19 parts per trillion. And if you were to combine the PFOA and PFOS in well seven, it would come to 30.4. Incidentally, all the numbers for PFOS, even though you need to add them together, are at a non-detect level. So, so anyway, so they're using well seven, eight, and very occasionally, well number...
Two.
Two, well number two. And that has a combined total of, PFOA and PFOS, of 31.5 parts per trillion. So as Nancy has suggested, they also tested at the, where the, where it's blended, because all the, the, the...
When you pull it all together, what's the end product?
Pull it all together, and it came in, in the low 20 parts per trillion, so 21, 22, something like that.
That's the blended?
The blended, right, for, for all three wells, primarily seven and eight. So MBD has been in contact with Ed Canning from St. Obane to discuss what their arrangements are going to be between them and the MBD, what, what St. Obane intends to do. And those discussions I, I hear are going well. St. Obane has so far been very accommodating, and, but they have made no commitments, so we don't, we're not sure what, you know, what's exactly happening there. And I...
About the soil samples?
Oh, yes.
That's good news. Let's say some good news.
Yeah. The soil samples, as the DES had expected, came back at, at non-detect levels.
Those are all the sensitive areas that they had done in Merrimack?
Like the schools and the playgrounds and all that kind of thing. And that's the soils, not the groundwater. And soils are tested at parts per billion, not parts per trillion. So, so anyway, all of them came back at non-detect levels. And as I said, they expected that, because at St., the St. Obane facility itself, their groundwater came back at 5,800 parts per trillion, and their soil came back at non-detect. But they thought that it was important to test these sensitive areas, anyway. Yes?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to review some things, thank you, Jody, that still I wonder about. When the EPA says life...
Go on.
Thank you, that's okay. Has a health advisory above 70, a lifetime. Does that, what kind of time, I know it's lifetime, but is that, if you had a well that had 70 parts per trillion, all your life, that would be okay, or does it mean a month, or...
No, it means for a lifetime, from a newborn to...
Literally, for a lifetime, a well that contains 70 parts per trillion.
Or more.
Is... The cutoff. Yeah.
If it's 70 or more, that's, that's when you get into health risks, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
But if it contains that, or less, they consider that that's not threatening. Okay, can I ask a couple of other...
Please.
Yes, I think you all know these things, but I'm coming a little bit late to the table.
Don't make that assumption. We may be...
We're all learning. When, when the landfill closed, I take it that they have wells that are similar over at Watson Park, that they're always there, and you just have to lift up the cap and put a sensor of some sort down there? Well, I take it that these have never been tested for this kind of chemical?
That's correct, yes.
And that, what do they test for, just more...
They test for all of, you know, any of the, any of the contaminants that they test, any arsenic and iron and lead and any kind of things that may be coming from a landfill. So I don't, I don't know the specifics, but there's a whole list of things that they check for. And until 2014, they were not testing for PFOA or PFOS at all.
Before when, '14?
2014. And in 2014, the number was a short time, a short-term number, and it was 400 parts per trillion, and there wasn't a lifetime number, yeah.
Can I add something? In the landfill, out of, out of a dozen wells, 10 are, weren't very deep wells, 2 were bedrock. So there was 12 testing wells at the landfill, from what I've been told, and 2 were really very deep, and the others were not. Just so you know.
And some of them were contaminated and some weren't.
Some were contaminated and some were...
That's right.
They all were. They, well, they all were, except for 2 or 3.
Yeah, okay.
And some more than others.
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot more.
Do you know if, I think some, some of you will know this, will they ever go away? Will it ever clear itself out, this particular chemical?
I don't believe so.
What do you want, truly, know?
Okay. Is there a filter that will take care of it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Very good. What they're concerned about right now is the drinking water. So the wells and all that kind of thing, and they're kind of taking it one step at a time, and I believe that the DES is learning as they go as well, because all these numbers and all these things are coming out all of a sudden. And the reason that the landfill wasn't tested for PFOA back in 2014 is because they decided that they would use, they would only test drinking water supplies for that, for municipal water, or for a water company that serviced at least 20,000 people. So they weren't testing landfills for that at that time.
Okay. So it's more dangerous to drink, I take it, than to, like, shower in or have it coming?
Well, when we had the person from DES, that was implied, the person who was in charge of the Health and Human Services, I believe, the epidemiologist, Dr. Chan, I believe it was, that was asked, and his response was, "It's not proven that showering has any effect. That ingestion is by far the, the most direct route of getting it in the body."
Inhaling clean vapors would be considered ingestion, therefore...
Right.
The water hitting your skin may not impact...
But the reality is, there's not much research out there. And what's going to be interesting is, now that the EPA has released a number, they had to base that on research, so we can find out that research and look at that research, and what does it say regarding those kind of things. And I'm sure the state, and I know they've already made the comment, that they're going to be reviewing that research, because it will have implications for the future in terms of the illnesses in the area.
And emerging chemicals.
Correct. Of which the harmony will probably erupt? Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, yeah.
So we don't know. Phil?
Eileen, was there any discussion about testing the brook that runs over the Merrimack town line in Bedford? Because that's located behind the landfill. And there are, so I'm assuming they're also going to do the swamp that's also on the town line as well?
They didn't talk about the swamp, they just talked about the brook.
Okay.
I'll mention the 2 of them, though.
I would encourage you to do so. The other, the other thing, was there any conversation, because at the, at the cap of the landfill, there are vents there for methane? Was there any discussion about doing some type of air quality analysis to determine whether or not PFOAs were being exhausted through the methane that's coming up from the landfill?
No, but that's an interesting point, and I will, I'll speak to them about that. Although my experience, limited though it may be, about the air quality testing is, it has not been very good, as far as the state's concerned.
Yes, Dan?
I can add something about that brook. I think the same information might be about when they said the Merrimack River was tested, because it was so close to St. Obane, but moving water apparently doesn't, it doesn't stick. So they, the Merrimack water, for instance, I believe it had, like, nothing, right? So my guess is the brook would fall, as long as it was moving, and maybe the swamp water does, because it's stagnant.
See, that's, I mean, if you make the case...
Rivers and streams, they said it wasn't, there was undetectable.
I mean, if you make the case that 2 out of our wells are in bedrock, and those waters move and they get in, that they, they sink in the swamp, I mean, we just don't know. We don't know. I'm just, I just, I'm trying to think of...
I'll give you firsthand information in about a month, because they tested my well on Saturday. I'm a half a mile from the hill.
I wasn't going to point that out, but I'm happy that you did.
So, you know, again...
And mine's a great test, because my well's 380 feet deep, so we'll see.
Again, I'm not a scientist, but I understand that when PFOA and water go through soil, it filters some of it out. So, you know, as I said, the soil is tested at parts per billion. And soon, we're going to have our own test done of the, of the sludge that goes into our compost. So we're going to have the sludge tested as well as the compost that comes from it, because we sell that, and we want to make sure that those...
That's clear, yeah.
You know, those products are marketable, and there's no issues with them. But fortunately, the sludge gets tested as soil, and compost will obviously be in a smaller quantity.
Okay, yes, Jody?
Thank you, Nancy. I just wanted to make one, ask one question. So the soil sampling that was done, Eileen, was within the 1, was it 1 mile or 1 and 1/2 mile, something like that, from the St. Obane facility itself, correct?
It was 1 mile, and anything that was close, like Reed's Ferry School, was done.
Okay, all right. So that, so those test results came back, that was a positive. It would appear to me, because we've talked a lot about communication with, and issues we've had with MBD, it would appear to me that communications are improving, and I'm really happy to hear that. I'm also happy to hear that MBD has been in contact directly with St. Obane, and I just wanted to thank you, Eileen, for your efforts in just hammering people until you get the information that you want and sharing it, because I, I think, I also saw that at the last school board meeting, the superintendent of the MBD, along with a representative from the DES, had a conversation with the school board, too, in public session. So it appears to me that communication, while it still may not be perfect, I don't know if it ever will be, it has improved, and I think you're responsible for a lot of that, Eileen, and I thank you very much. It's important to people.
Exactly, they just need to know.
Yes, communication is huge.
And again, I'll raise, you know, what are we on, 3 months now, and I still haven't gotten anything in the mail from the Merrimack Village District about what they've done. And I don't see what the difficulty is in sending the ratepayers of this community a letter to let them know what's going on, because if they're not going to put on their website, it's very easy to put, slap a 44-cent stamp on it, or whatever the cost of postage is, and type up a letter and send it out, and have Mr. Minor or Chairman Wood sign the letter. I don't see what the difficulty is.
I understand. I don't disagree. Friendly, did you have something to say?
Probably a question I could find out later, but real quickly, is our aqua flow north to south?
I don't know that. I'll find out for you, though.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
The reason for the question is I didn't know if St. Obane's, you know, byproduct was causing that, or if it was coming west to east, which is what I thought it was, but I don't know, so...
As far as the landfill is concerned?
No, no, the, the wells 7 and 8 down in the Hollis area.
Oh, I see, okay.
I didn't know that it was heading that way, which probably does...
I believe it's still, it's airborne.
Oh, okay.
It was air, yeah. Yeah. It spread all the way to Lichfield, so...
Yeah, and that's the prevailing way, that's why...
Yeah.
It, it may be a north-south situation.
Yeah, you could be right. I'm not sure. I'm just learning, too.
Okay, the next topic, the NED Pipeline. As of 5/23, Kinder Morgan formally withdrew its application for the pipeline with FERC. I would be happy to receive a motion, taking this off the agenda, hopefully forever.
So moved, seconded.
So the motion is made, but we probably don't, but let's make it official. Let's make it a momentous occasion. Dan Dwyer, and seconded by Bill Boyd. Is there any discussion? I didn't think so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you dare? No. 7-0-0, great. So we will officially take that off the agenda, hopefully forever. Okay, comments from the press and public, any? Seeing now, there are no recognitions, resignations, retirements, appointments, none. Public hearing. We have a public hearing in 2016 Local Source Water Protection Grant Program Fund Acceptance, submitted by Highway Operations Manager Laurie Barrett. Come on up, Laurie, for your initial presentation to, we don't bite, we snarl, but we don't bite. Town Council will hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance... Town Council will hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance and expenditure of the 2016 Local Source Water Protection Grant Program funds in the amount of $19,800. And I'll let you present the specifics. So, go right ahead, just make sure your light's on, and take a deep breath, and go for it.
Thank you. So, Merrimack's got a great opportunity here. We partnered with Sensible Spreader Technologies, and to get some new technology on salt reduction, which is always a great gift for us, cost-wise and environmental-wise. So, New Hampshire DES has a local watershed grant that's available for 2016, and we're just getting in under the gun, so, perfect timing. But Sensible Spreader Technologies, I think you all have the handout. They, they give some technology, which is a tablet in the driver's, driver's seat. And it's tied to wireless technology, and it's all stored in the cloud, but it's tied to their spreader auger. So, we can sense how much they're spreading. We can also set up the computer to map our low-salt and no-salt areas in town, and that will sense a trigger to the driver when they're in those areas, so that they know either not to spread salt, or to spread less salt. So, this is a really great opportunity. Laconia's been using it for three years now, and they've seen great reduction in their salt use. Yeah. So, we're excited. We got approval for the grant, so that will give us money to, for the first six trucks to set up equipment. We use this to equip the six trucks and use them in our wellhead areas in town. MVD also wrote in the, in acceptance letter, they're in approval for this too, so. Other things that I would do, we have to report for two years to DES on our findings. Every three months, we have to report to them, so it's a pretty thorough examination of our, of what we'll find.
What results do you have to send?
How, what?
What results do you have to send?
So, we'll have to, we have to send them results based on how much salt we've used in the areas. MVD does-
Testing, I realize.
Testing for the sodium, so we'll also have to-
Perfect.
Work with that. So, so the, the grant is for the setup of the six trucks and the data usage for the first year. After that, DES would like to see us go into the second year and prove further results. And that would mean that the town would have to take on like data usage cost, which is $7,200 per year. But if we don't find it, we don't need to continue with the experiment. But I think it's a great opportunity. We're always looking for ways to reduce our costs and the impacts on our environment, so I'm excited about it.
Yes, Eileen?
So, Laurie, so the amount of money that, that this represents is, I don't have my glasses on, how much is it?
$19,800.
$19,800 worth of equipment.
Equipment in the first year of data usage.
And the first year of data, data uses. And how, so this is for six trucks, and how many trucks do, that, that spread sand do we have in our fleet?
Salt, or sand?
Salt.
Salt.
We have 13 trucks that can spread salt.
Okay.
Some are not capable, and some we only have for sand, because of, we have a lot of sand areas.
How many are capable?
13.
There are 13 that are capable. So, if we wanted to, we could purchase more equipment or apply for another grant in, in another year. Do you happen to know if the monitoring costs might, might be about the same or more? Is it, is it like a software contract that we?
Yes, exactly. It'd be about $1,000 per truck.
Per truck. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to have, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing, and then we can have questions and debate after, okay? So, I'd like to open the public meeting at 7:35. And look at the crowd coming up. Seeing none. Let's make it, close it at 7:36. Okay, now we can have our discussion. Yes, Bill?
Madam Chair, I've got a ton of questions, and I'm willing to defer if my colleagues have other questions. I don't want to absorb their time.
How do you handle that? Can you, okay.
I just, if I just want to get a better understanding of the, the ongoing costs or the data gathering, or whatever, you said $7,200 a year for these six trucks?
For the six trucks.
For what? For data collection?
It collects, and then it will report, it sends out, sets out reports.
So, is it like a software contract?
Yes.
Is this a fixed source or something? Or, I mean, that seems like a lot of money for six vehicles, six winters, I mean.
No, I understand, but when we talk about the amount of salt that it would save us-
Well, okay, so there's the other question. What's the offset? What kind of numbers do you expect to save, or do you think you might save?
We have, we have a budget of $130,000 just for salt.
Yeah.
If we save 10%, it's $13,000. And Laconia saw in their first year 16% savings.
16?
Yep.
And do they have follow-on years? I mean, did they increase that number?
The third year was over 14%. So, if it's continuing, it's 16%, 14%.
So, averaging 15?
Yep. So, it's a considerable savings.
So, that's on the order of $20,000 a year in our current salt budget?
Correct. And it's not something, I think, that we'd have to continue for years, for 10 years. If we got control of it, we understood what we were doing better, it's something that we could-
The, the data monitoring portion, you mean?
Correct.
The, the data gathering or the reporting of this, is that something you would handle out of your office, or?
Yes.
Okay. You don't see that as being an extra burden?
No. I think it's worth the cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Finley, did you?
Yeah, thanks, Laurie. I know we have equipment in possibly all the trucks, I'm not sure of that, but on many trucks where it rations out the proper amount of salt and/or sand for maintenance.
Yes.
This data, when we get this, are you suggesting that there's a possibility, when we see how it's worked through that process, they'll be able to program that in to our current equipment?
Yes.
With that knowledge?
Yes. It's an auger that ties right into that gate at the back of the-
Yep.
So, with that data, you can lock the gate at a certain spot and monitor it there.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? Dan?
I feel a little skeptical on, on it, because if, if we have 13 trucks, and only half the, only half the trucks are going to have the monitoring equipment, so I feel like the, that old, that cliche, data in, data out, you know, if, if, I'm not sure we get a clear scientific picture of what the results really are throughout town.
So, those-
Because it doesn't seem to be covering every truck that's throwing out sand or salt.
Right.
So, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't get it all. If, if, if we're covered every truck, then I would say, okay, we're getting good data, because everything's being covered. But this sounds like it's not being covered.
So, the first, what happens with these six trucks is that they'll be monitored. So, the first five to 10 storms will be without it, without the sensor, but we'll have all that information. The second one, the, the second five to 10 storms, depending on the winter, we'll put the equipment in. So, it's kind of a-
For those six trucks, yeah.
And you, and you focus on those, because I happen to be in a no-salt area, and you're right, the MVD monitors that very struck, that there's a problem.
Yes.
And they have to treat that. So, environmentally, we, we are talking about PFOAs, we have a problem with sodium and chlorine, so, but they would isolate or focus those trucks in those-
In those worst areas.
But I understand your point, but at least it's something.
I also just-
It's a start to the-
I just think, weather's constantly changing, there are good, there are good winters, there are bad winters, icy winters. I, I just, it just seems so subjective. Any given season is different.
That is why DES wanted two years.
To be able to collect more data.
Yes.
I don't know, the other thing I could see in my mind is sodium, I read another study how everything, you know, a few years back, salt was bad, now everyone's becoming anemic, you know, across the country. It's like, you know, not, not people are, are having, are not having, you know, no sun, like, you stay out of the sun, yeah, because you need vitamin D, and now people aren't taking enough salts, and now we don't have enough salt. I, I, it's a little too confusing to know what's up anymore about it, so.
I understand.
You know, I had a couple, you know, basal cells off my face, so I started staying out of the sun, and now my doctor tells me, you know, you need more-
You're getting deficient in that vitamin D.
Now, I gotta take vitamin D, so, I don't know. It's just a little confusing on the, on the data. I just don't, I, I, I just can't get my head wrapped around the, the subjective nature of winter. There's some years where our salt budget is really low, because we didn't use a lot, and then there's some other really bad icy winters, they're using more. I don't know if the truck, if the driver's out there and he needs, it's a really bad icy storm, then the heck with the monitor, he's going to need to put down some more salt, right?
You can't, but you, there are no salt routes.
And that's-
That they only put sand down, they don't put salt at all.
And if that's the case, and that doesn't change, so.
But I bet there's errors.
I'm sure Bill will like that.
That's my, there are, I, well, I used to live in a no-salt, and there was salt down all the time, so, and right near a lot of water, major water bodies too. So, I, there are errors, and, and if this would help control some of those errors and rectify the errors, then I would, I would be in support of it, because I, I would see several times salt down clearly in a no-salt area. And if there, if that's human error, you know, just because you're out working all night doing, clearing a storm, then if you've got software and equipment to help you correct that, I, I think that's a good thing.
Finley?
And if I may, if it, if it, if it's something that we don't find to be beneficial, we're stuck for one year with the data and software costs.
Bingo.
And after that, we can say no more.
Maybe my biggest question is, if it's not on all the trucks, and what, what is the value in the data?
For me, it's more of an envi, I mean, I like the cost savings, potential cost savings, but it's an environmental thing as well. It's for the watershed. And so, that's why I'm, I'm surely in favor of trying it out for a couple of years. And, and again, if I understand it correctly, it'll be the cost for the second year only. And if it's just not worth it, you know.
Well, no, I think, we'll look at the data-
We'll have to come up with the $7,200.
For the second year.
For the second year.
Anticipated savings for yourself.
Should cover.
Should cover.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thanks.
Well, no, he said, he said he's gonna, we're gonna limit his time.
So, I'd rather have everybody-
We're gonna limit his time, so go for it.
Call a question.
This is supposed to be a short meeting. Go ahead.
Well, I, I was thinking that, and Lauren, you might know this, but you, you get three inches of snow, you get 10 inches of snow, the plows still have to go all the way around and plow everything. So, I'm not, I'm not certain how much difference there is between a three-inch storm and a 10-inch storm.
It's the temperature.
An icier one, or a-
It's pavement temperature.
It has to, it never turns.
That determines when we can and can't use salt.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Interesting.
Salt doesn't work under 15 degrees. So, it's no use putting it down.
So, don't even bother.
Don't even bother.
Right. Interesting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Salt doesn't work under 15 degrees. Pavement temperature, you have to remember, that's what we're talking about. So, it's, it's ineffective under that.
Come on.
Okay.
Okay, Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, appreciate it.
Call a question quick enough.
I hope I can answer all your questions.
You want to install six computers on plow trucks, which means you have to train six drivers on how the technology works, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And at an average of four hours to provide training to each driver, that's 24 hours, is that included in the cost of the grant, or do we absorb that?
Nope. That's included in, in the cost of the setup.
Okay. If that's the case, when I look at the last page regarding the cost for the protection grant, where it says operation training on CIT, it's $200.
It's one four-hour training session for all six drivers.
So, you're going to train all six people in one classroom at the same time?
Yep.
Okay. So, going back to the, without, you're not going to use the technology for the first five to 10 storms, and then you're going to use the, the, the computer for the next five, did I understand that correctly?
Yeah. This is how DES set up the, what they'd like to see. They set up the testing parameters and how they'd like to see it, to get the information from us.
What happens if we have another mild winter, like we just experienced this past year? Does, does the testing get bumped out a year? And if that's the case, do we absorb additional cost for, as it relates to the data usage?
Yep. That's why we discussed two years. That's why DES wanted to see the two years, so.
What I'm saying is, is you may not, you may not be able to, you're gonna, you're gonna, we're conceivably going to buy something and not use it for a year with the grant money, is that correct?
It could be possible.
Okay. Once, what?
It could be possible, but not likely. I mean, we had a mild winter, we don't usually have two in a row. I mean, nobody knows.
It's the first year the pharmacist almanac was wrong, I'll say that.
We still had quite a few events this year.
I understand, I understand we did, but I knew-
We didn't have the snow, we had ice.
But I, but I knew about your road temperature question, which is why, you know, I, anyhow. The, sorry, I've, I've scribbled down several stuff. One thing, and I'm going in circles, and I apologize, Laurie. On the letter that you got from Amy Hudner, it requested that you had to provide a certificate of insurance, and that was kind of perplexing, why we would want a certificate of insurance on something that we're going to be installing into trucks. Because usually, when I think of a certificate of insurance, I'm thinking malpractice insurance. I, I've got my insurance guru over here, maybe she can chime in and, and weigh, weigh in on this, but I'm just-
I'm wondering if it's because it's their money that we'll be using?
And they're giving, they're giving us grant money to buy this technology, yet they want a certificate of insurance. I just, struck me odd.
To make sure that you have insurance on your trucks. It's just a-
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's not a, it's a standard practice of requiring certificates of insurance. It's for insurance that we already have, we wouldn't have to purchase additional-
With the motor vehicle insurance?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know why they wrote it that way. I'm sorry?
I didn't see anything. I was thinking, the other thing is too, if the truck is in an accident, do they have insurance to replace the-
I mean, that's, and that, yeah, I just-
It's under the warranty.
Because it would be part of the-
Part of the loss.
What is the, so, we're outfitting six trucks, what is the percentage of roadways in Merrimack that impact wellheads?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I could find that out for you, though.
Okay.
A lot, yeah.
I, I understand that. So, fair to say, if we, if we stick with the contract, and even if we take the, the So fair to say, if we, if we stick with the contract, and even if we take the data usage out of the piece, potentially, we're gonna be budgeting $6,000 for as long as the DPW makes, chooses to make a budgetary commitment for this particular technology because they see the value of what it does for drivers being able to apply the right amount of, or not apply, the type of salt in the given area?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Think about it sometime for no questions.
Well, I didn't wanna commit, because I don't think, some of the trucks, what, some of the trucks that aren't gonna be used in the areas don't need to be outfitted.
Right.
So we don't need to spend that money. But I can't guarantee that that truck's gonna be in that snowplow area all the time.
Okay.
Especially during breakdowns or.
And because it's cloud technology, is it something that the driver goes in, they hit a button like, you know, with our Apple phones, where you get the digital updates, it'll automatically update whatever software needs to be updated?
Yeah, it's a small tablet.
Small tablet, okay. Do they provide any technical support for?
Yes.
Okay, and that's, is, so obviously, the grant's paying for that, but moving forward with the 1,000 per truck in the contract, that would also include the technical support?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Do you have any idea when this goes before the Governor's Council?
We need to get it there before the end of June.
Before the end of June, okay. Okay, Lori, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll say.
Yes, Tom.
Lori, is this something that the driver has to monitor while he's driving along? I mean, does that violate the state's anti-technology laws? It says you can't use cell phones or any technology while you're driving?
There's nothing he needs to touch while he's driving, it's on a tablet.
Yeah.
And it will be there.
Mounted, so he can just see it as a GIS type map or?
Correct, right. So when he gets into a low-salt area, it will make a sound, so he's aware that he's in a low-salt area. And all he has to do is look, and you can see if he's on a map, a roadmap, where he's double-coveraging, that it will turn red, so.
So it automatically converts over?
Yep. So there's nothing he needs to punch in to type or?
He doesn't have to interact with it, he just needs to be able to observe it.
No, he has one hit, and he has got one on the plow, that's all he's got.
I don't want him distracted.
No.
And get a ticket.
And get a ticket no less, yeah.
No, we don't want that either.
Okay, and it's to an emotion at this point?
Madam Chair, I would move that the Town Council accept and expend the 2016 Local Source Water Protection Grant Program funds in the amount of $19,800 from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to the town of Merrimack for the Assessment of Coverage Indication Technology as a tool for reducing chloride in and around sensitive areas project pursuant to RSA 31 column 95-B in Chata article 8-15. And furthermore, that the town manager and/or her proxy be authorized to sign any and all documentation necessary to perfect the grant.
Any a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Koenig. Okay, all those, what?
Good work, thank you.
Thank you.
You're waving to me.
Well, I just wanted to get him two cents.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six and a half, six and a half, seven zero zero.
This is the digital world, you have to say yes or no.
Thank you very much, Lori, good job.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, legislative, legislative update from state reps, saying none. Town managers report, Eileen.
You don't have to stay, Lori, if you don't want to.
Oh, she wants to stay.
She does not.
I watch her, she doesn't.
There's so much joy in drills. Okay, I have quite a few things here tonight. The contractor has made significant progress at the Bean Road Bridge over the winter, and they're confident that the Bean, that Bean Road, Bean Road will be open in August of 2016, so that the school buses will be able to resume their former schedules once school begins on Tuesday, September 6, 2016. McGawbridge Road will not be open until sometime in October or November, so the buses will need to access that neighborhood from DW Highway until then. The Merrimack Transfer Station staff received an award for Best Brochure at the Northeast Resource Recovery Association for their 35th Annual Recycling Conference Exposition. The brochure, which is a recycling brochure, was developed by the town staff and updated by Patrick Davis, scale operator, to serve as a guide for residents who use the transfer station. The brochure can be found on the Public Works Solid Waste Division website at Town Hall and at the transfer station. And I'd like to thank the, the DPW guys over at the transfer station for their good work. And I'm told that several other communities have contacted them and would like to use their, the example.
Play your voices.
Yeah.
Is it the triangle where that's fallen plowed?
That's right.
I'm not sure, sorry. Last night at the ZBA meeting, they granted a special exception for Verizon Wireless to move forward to the planning board for a new 100-foot-tall cell tower, not in your neighborhood, Bill, on land owned by MVD off Turkey Hill Road where the water tower site is. The project will now move forward to the site plan review by the planning board at an upcoming meeting not yet scheduled. On June 7, the planning board will consider a subdivision and site plan for Wood Spring Hotels to use a portion of the former Merrimack Hotel, remember they came in and they were talking to us about a sign, on Executive Park Drive for a 123-room extended-stay hotel. The land to be utilized is currently part of the parking area of the former hotel. The property owners continue to examine options for the further redevelopment of the site. And Tim was saying that they expect that probably in the fall, the structure, the former hotel structure will probably be demolished. The Merrimack Fire Department, the EPA, and the Regional Hazardous Materials Response Teams throughout New Hampshire, and Jones Chemical Company will be participating in a simulated joint chemical release training program, exercise. This exercise is scheduled for tabletop planning on June 25, and a practical exercise to occur on June 26. The objective of this exercise is to have the regional hazardous materials teams working together to determine the potential concentration of the chemical release of, into the air, and be able to transmit that data to the Incident Command Center, who's the fire chief in Merrimack. This data will be used to establish a chemical response plan for evacuation protections in place and the chemical release mitigation. Basically, they do several tabletop events or exercises for hazardous mitigation, hazards mitigation, every year. And once a year, they will select a community and a particular type of hazard, potential hazard, and they, this year, they selected Jones Chemical. So, that's interesting. We had a nice note from Mark Hastings, who is the RN Director, Emergency Management EMS and Trauma Coordinator, for a nicely-done job by the Merrimack Fire Department from the Southern New Hampshire Medical Center. As a result of a 69-year-old patient being brought in from the fire, by the Merrimack Fire Department, who had new onset of chest pains about 30 minutes before calling the fire department. And at the, the patient was brought to the emergency cath lab, and he was basically saved. His life was saved, and he was discharged and home two days later. So, another good job by the fire department.
They clapped soon enough.
They clapped soon enough, yeah. And that's.
Excellent. Okay, nothing on the consent agenda, nothing on old business. Okay, new business, I just want to explain a little bit, this has to do with committee This relates to Bill Cummings. He had applied for a position with the Town Center Committee, and we did interview. We became aware that as of July 1, he'd have to be re-sworn in, because that's when the new rotation comes up. He was not gonna be able to make the June meeting anyway. So what I'm suggesting is we take him off this evening's appointment, we'll put it on in June, when a lot of the new reappointments are gonna happen effective July 1, instead of doing it twice for one month. And he's agreed to that. So I'm going to withdraw Bill Cummings' dis, you know, appointment for this evening. Now, Dawn Shepherd was interviewed for the EdCAC as a full member. You have the paperwork that was provided. She, she's not the executive director, there's a title change, but anyway.
President, she's the president of the chair.
Okay, the Chamber of Commerce. And we had a really interesting discussion about how nice it would be to have a chamber involved with EdCAC, and Susan Lee, who's the chair of that committee right now, being receptive and being happy to have the chamber re-involved as well.
Absolutely.
And then we have a troublemaker with the other guy, Thomas Mahan.
Can we split the motions on that, Madam Chair?
Which was kind of silly, as I started the interview, I said, now, why would you be interested in this, and what qualifications do you have? But anyway, Thomas J. Mahan is looking for the appointment to the alternate member for the zoning board of adjustment. So we have those two.
So moved.
You have the paperwork in front, so you're suggesting that for both?
For both, please.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, Bill Boyd, and second?
Second.
Okay, by Dandrea. Okay, any discussion?
So, are all of these effective July 1?
No, Dawn and Tom would be immediately.
And Tom says he's applying effective July 1, so I just, I was curious why you were making a distinction. Well, something in here I just read said.
Yeah, it was Bill Cummings.
That was the Cummings?
Well, okay, never mind. So do they not have to get reappointed in July?
They do, but they don't have to be, well, some people, the ZBA have to be interviewed, EdCAC does not. The only three councils, the only three boards that we need to re-interview for, for reappointment, is Planning Board, ZBA, and Conservation Commission. So this is just a paper turnover for the other ones. Okay, okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No, okay, seven zero zero. Now, Dawn is not here, but Mr. Mahan is here. I'm assuming to be sworn in.
We're sworn in.
Oh, sworn in.
Been a while, almost a month.
Just quick to stay away.
And Tom, is it two years? At least, that's what I saw, that's what I saw.
Says alternate three years on this paper that everybody signed.
Well, all right.
Just.
I only got stuck for two when I got drafted.
He thought it was two, that's what they told him, they just converted.
I saw something other than the one.
I, Thomas J. Mahan, solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a, as an alternate member of the zoning board of adjustment according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God. [applause] No. I don't like you to follow, I just can't help it.
To wave.
Here is your.
Welcome back.
Code of Ethics, read it well.
Yes.
He probably wrote it.
Why do you do this? I told the judge after that, I told him to raise cap.
You can have some signatures.
Thank you, Tom, congratulations. Stay here. Enjoy.
And you don't have to stay, Tom.
He's, he's, he's taking great joy in not staying.
I'm heading for the door.
Thank you, Tom.
And we do have to sign this part. Okay, we'll be passing around the signatures for those two appointments. Okay, request to sell items on town property, submitted by Holly Degel.
And you must be Holly.
I was gonna say, Holly.
Holly's Kona Ice Truck is requesting permission from the Town Council to sell Kona Ice from her mobile food truck during Park and Recreation's 2016 Summer Concert Series at Abbey Griffin Park. So you can either feel free to stand or sit down, whatever you're comfortable with.
Wow, that was written pretty well, it wasn't even by me. Hi, thank you guys for your time. Do you get, have you guys seen this?
Nope, no.
No.
Do you mind if I pass them?
Please do.
It's, it's, it's good that I have without having one out in the parking lot for you guys. So this is what the Kona.
We can share.
Truck looks like. So the product we sell is a Hawaiian-style shaved ice.
You have to be near the mic.
So, the product that we sell is a Hawaiian-style shaved ice. We've been in business for about five years, and Merrimack has been great to us. We've participated in the Fourth of July, we do fundraising for NYA baseball, softball, soccer, we've been at the Rib Fest, I've got a place up at the Outlet Mall, so I have a lease at the Merrimack Premium Outlets. And I saw the summer concert series come up, I've been working with Matt at Parks and Rec, and I asked him, hey, that might be a great place to do some fundraising for your scholarship program. Certainly, you have families who don't have the funds necessary to participate like they would want to. And that's, one of our primary modes of business is fundraising. So Matt wrote that nice little piece, so I could be here tonight, and that's what we'd like to do.
Do we have questions from the council? Yes, Dan.
Does your truck look like this?
It looks just like that. It's actually a photograph.
I've missed it, I haven't seen it, that's why.
It's actually a photograph of the truck, and all the background is, is photoshopped in by the.
I was gonna say, are you gonna bring in the sand when you park it?
My trucks are out tonight, or I would have one in the parking lot, and we'd all have to go out and have some shaved ice.
That'd be nice. Anyway. So where do you plan to park this?
I'm not sure, I'd have to work out the logistics, what would be accessible, safety's always my first concern, so I don't want, you know, kids running across a parking lot or a street to get to me. So I'd have to see how you're set up here in the park, and I'm sure we can find a place that's.
Probably down by Community Development.
It's mobile.
And do you need any hookups or anything while you're running?
Totally self-contained, we do not run a generator. Everything I need is run off a battery that I charge at night. So the shaver, the lights, we can put some calypso music on before the concert goes. It just adds the atmosphere, it's a lot of fun.
Finley?
Holly, I didn't know if you wanted to speak to the fundraising portion of it that I had read in your information.
Sure, yeah. So we've been in business, this is coming into our fifth season, so in that amount of time, we've raised locally over $70,000 that we've given back to communities, schools, obviously Merrimack's not the only town that operate in, but in Southern New Hampshire, schools, youth sports. So 25% of my sales comes back, would, in this case, come back to Parks and Rec or wherever somebody deems it should go. I think it's a Parks and Rec Scholarship Fund. So that comes right off the top, I don't try to do a percent of profit or proceeds, that's rather ambiguous.
Did you bring any samples?
I did, I did, it was hot. I actually, I actually have both my trucks out tonight, so that's good.
Yes, Jerry.
I've seen the truck at the Outlet Malls.
Yep.
All the time, they're right on the sidewalk, so you are very mobile, and it would seem to me to be easy enough for you to find a place. My question, because this is, I haven't experienced too much of the, too many of these requests, is precedence, so we, we have outside vendors come in, I know we've had one since I've been on the council come forward, but as far as precedence for these concerts, would there be any issue with allowing this one vendor, would other vendors want to come in?
Well, we've had a vendor down at Watson Park, right?
Yeah. Hot dog.
And hot dogs.
Right, that's the one I'm familiar with.
We never had an issue with.
Okay.
I think on a past, if I may, past conversations, we've kind of said subjectively, if one, if a hot dog vendor came and asked, and then a week later, another hot dog vendor asked, we'd say no. It was like, kind of like the first person who stepped up to the plate and wanted to be there, we felt like we weren't trying to create a competitive situation.
Okay.
It's an informal rule, but it's something that we had discussed before, and we said that's just the way, it's the way it's gone before, when something of that nature like you're referring to.
Okay, all right. I mean, that was really my only question, was about precedence.
People will ask, they watch, they're watching what we're doing all the time.
And then you said that our Director of Parks and Rec is obviously involved in this, so he's obviously in support and on board with this?
Very much so.
Okay.
And also, there's, there's the value-added part, too. It's not just a vendor coming in and, being the, you know, coming in and being the solitary vendor at a, you know, an event where you know there are people. They also give 25% of the proceeds for the town itself, so it's, it's different than. They also give 25% of the proceeds for the town itself, so it's, it's different than...
Just a regular vendor, straight retail.
In fact, one of my trucks is at Thornton's Ferry tonight. They've got their art show going on, and we've done it for, this is our fourth year, and they love us, and it's hot tonight, so that's good.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions, Bill?
I mean, I just would point out, I mean, as it reads here on the request form, the last four years, Holly's Kona Ice Truck has raised over $70,000 for local groups, schools, and youth sports. That's $17,500 a year that this one individual is taking from her proceeds and putting back into the community for community programs. I think that's dynamite, and I think that's something we should be applauding and celebrating, 'cause it's not often that we have, we do, but I'm just saying it's...
Not often enough.
Not often enough. So, thank you for that, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Tom.
Just, just one other thing to point out that's listed here, just to get you to confirm it, that, that you have all the town permits and health inspection requirements in hand.
State, town.
So, insurance and all that kinda stuff is...
Insurance, yep.
We're not trying to give you anything different than we would ask of any other vendor.
No, they've taken it already and signed off on it, so...
Okay, good, thank you.
Yes, Dan.
Do you live in town?
I do not.
Oh.
I live in Pelham.
It didn't matter, I was just curious.
I live in Pelham, but I work more here. I'm glad that you guys see it, 'cause some of the Pelham people don't. It's what it is.
Thanks.
Okay, Moshe?
Madam Chair, I would move that the town council grant Holly Kona's, Holly's Kona Ice Truck permission to sell Kona ice from her mobile food truck during the Parks and Rec Department's 2016 Summer Concert Series to be held at Abbey Griffin Park. And furthermore, if any documents need to be signed by the town manager, that she or her proxy are authorized to do so.
Motion by Bill Boyd, seconded by Finley Rothaus. Any further discussion? Yep. Jackie?
Holly, where do you have your truck when it's at the, at the Griffin Park?
I'm not sure where I'll park yet. It'll depend on how it's set up, and I'll take someone's advice as to where you think I should be. Like I said, safety's always my concern, so I don't wanna be across the parking lot where kids have to come to me, I wanna be close in, so that, you know, so there's access.
You can probably talk to Matt, too.
It's also unattractive, yeah, we'll talk to Matt. It may attract people to the, to the town common, to Abbey Griffin Park.
I would think so.
All set, Jack?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Say none. 7-0-0. Very good, Holly.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you all.
All set, thank you.
I'll take them back.
Actually, could I keep mine?
You absolutely can.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, yes. Please cycle it.
They look expensive.
They do look expensive.
That's a nice piece, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly.
Next hot night, I'll have to bring a truck.
There you go. You've been surprised us. I will have a town council...
Five-minute break.
Five-minute break.
Should be tiny bubbles by Don Ho.
Tiny bubbles, I'll sit for you just a minute.
You know, there was, there was a conversation a number of years ago where members of the council wanted to eliminate the music from the ice cream trucks going through the neighborhoods.
I remember that.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes, I do remember that.
It's terrible music, David.
But you're talking about how long?
Thank you.
Two minutes?
Unless you stop by the Goodrich household when the kids were young.
Yeah, or the scheme of things, you know? Okay, disposal of tax-dated properties. Eileen?
Okay, this year, we took one piece of property by tax collector's deed. As you know, the taxes have to have been over, have not been paid for three years in order for this to happen, and so, the property has been taken, and the town now owns this property at Seven Richards Road. So, you have a couple of different choices. One is to retain the property. Normally, we wouldn't do that, but in this case, the Public Works Department would like to have the property should the owner not decide to, to take the, to reacquire the property in order to do a drainage project and some sewer infrastructure things that they need to do over there. So, so you can retain the property, but you have to hold it for three years, because the statute says that the former owner has three years to come back and purchase the property. In this case, what, in, in all cases, but just to give you some idea of the numbers, as you know, the interest rate is first at 12%, and then, when it goes to tax lien, it goes up to 18%, and then fees get added to that, which Finley loves. And then, on top of that...
'Cause you know I'm gonna have to have a comment about it.
Once, oh, bummer. And then...
It's a little bit better, though, the way you hear.
And then, when the property actually gets deeded, there's a 15% penalty, and that's a 15% of the value of the property. So, the total bill for, to reclaim this property at this time is $31,000. So, so anyway, you can either retain the property, but you'd have to retain it for three years, or you can go out and solicit bids for it, and, and they can do, go through the bidding process right away. It's only the municipality that can acquire it.
But we could retain it for three years.
We could retain it for three years.
Question? During that three-year period, the, the former owner could repurchase it even if someone, if, even if it went out to auction?
No. If it goes out to auction, it cannot be bought by municipal, by the municipality, but if it goes out to auction and someone buys it, they, it's, they own it.
It's gone.
Yeah.
But there's something about, over a certain price, the former owner gets something, doesn't, don't they?
Yes, at the auction, I understood that after everything's paid for, the owner will get the profits.
That's left over.
Yeah.
Anything above and beyond what the town is owed.
Thirty-one thousand.
I have to say, as a person who lives in that neighborhood, drainage proj, any drainage project would be a wonderful thing. I have to say it. And the water comes down and back, oh, to Watson back, I guess, the water comes down scenic vista, and it's, that area could definitely use attention.
What's anyone else's thoughts? Bill?
It's a question that I just answered myself. And I don't know, can I talk about what's in here? Is it okay to talk about what's in the signed file? Because there's an assign, there's a petition for an abatement that was approved for the same property that we're seeking to deed.
We've already deeded it.
But we've got, there's, there was a request and approval for abatement in here.
With what date?
2016.
We should look into that, then. That doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense, but it doesn't change this, so I can give you an answer for that.
Your, your thing is not on?
All I, all I need to know from you is, do you wanna retain it, or don't you? And that, you make a good point, I don't know anything about that, I've never seen that, so...
So, but, but the point that I'm getting at, are, do we put ourselves at risk by making a decision on this, knowing that there was something in our assigned file that, to me, might have an adverse, I mean, I don't know the answer to this question, which is why I'm asking the question. It wouldn't it be prudent to table this and have answers to our questions, so that the council's better informed to make a decision as to what to do with this piece of property? Because to be perfect, be perfectly honest with you, I agree with what DPW was asking, but I'm also mindful of the fact that Merrimack is on Babusak Lake, and we don't have a boat ramp. I don't believe we have a boat ramp onto Babusak Lake, and I'm thinking that this might be an ideal location to have a boat ramp and have, actually have access to Babusak Lake.
It's not waterfront.
It's separate.
That's a right-of-way.
It's a, but, but I'm thinking, if it's a right-of-way, you'd have access to it, so...
It's probably a common right-of-way.
You can't drive down there.
I'm not saying, I'm not asking you to drive, but you could take a canoe, or you could take a paddleboat or something like that. I'm just, that's how I'm looking at it, but...
You can already.
So, I, my preference would be to, to table it until I have questions as to how we should proceed with this.
I'm okay, and what's, anyone else's opinion? I think that's fine, I...
Well, you know exactly where I am. If this woman has been contacting, she said she's not interested in retaining it, I'm all good with whatever ultimately happens at that point. The whole, the whole thing is offensive to me because of the 12% interest initially, and the 18% following up, and the 15% penalty. It's all insane and just obscene.
Now, there is something you had mentioned, there was gonna be a change, or projected change?
Right. I believe on July 1st, the legislature has put into place whereby that 15% penalty will now be 10. So, we're going to inform the person, because she may be interested in purchasing it, but she's not sure that it's worth it to her. Purchasing it back. So, we would, you know, we would, I think, as long as you don't have any problem with it, honor the 10%, since it's right there.
Yeah, it's like a month away.
So, was she contacted before the deeding took place?
Oh, she's contacted over...
No, no, I know she's been given notice, but we've apparently had a conversation about this, where she's now telling us she wants to buy it back.
No, she says she's not sure whether it's worth it to buy it.
Well, at this point, with 15% or, or even 10% on top, maybe it's not.
The house is only worth $31,000.
Right, no, I saw that. You're right, it's barely, barely a cottage.
Yeah.
So, anyhow, I mean, I'm in favor of keeping it for the next three years personally, and if it's used for drainage ultimately, you know, that, or whatever, that would be fine. I'm not in favor of expediting the process, for me personally.
To answer your question, Bill, maybe we can serve a motion that says, if we agree for the three years, bait, depending upon the outcome of that abatement...
Contingent.
On the outcome of that abatement, that is weird.
I'd just like you, I'd just like you to do it cleanly. So, either you can do it tonight, or if you're not comfortable with it, then you can do it, you can table it and do it at the next meeting.
Then I would move to table, Madam Chair.
Okay. Yes, Dan.
The abate, the abatement is just another way of her trying to lower her tax burden. I'm not quite getting the connection of, of the importance of, if she hasn't paid taxes on it for several years, then asking for an abatement, what is that supposed to mean to me?
Why are we giving, why do we approve an abatement if she hasn't been paying taxes?
She must have applied for it.
It's, to me, it's contradictory.
No, you can owe taxes and apply for an abatement.
You can owe taxes and still apply for an abatement.
I, I understand that, but how are we, we're gonna, we're gonna take somebody's property, and they're still gonna, they're still gonna apply for an abatement, even though they don't technically own the property?
I, I'm trying to get to, I'm trying to understand why that concern, why does that concern you, and why is it important? Like, what, I'm missing something, too, then?
I'm wondering if we missed a step in the process.
Like, like what?
That I don't know. That I don't.
Well, technically, she doesn't own it anymore.
That's correct.
So, how can you have an abatement?
So, if she doesn't own it, why, why are we giving, why are we giving her money? If she doesn't own it, why are we giving her money?
We're not giving her money.
No, but we're, to me, an abatement is, we're reducing the tax burden, so it's putting money in.
But that's not giving someone money.
That's how I look at it.
You can't give people money...
You can look at it a certain way, but it doesn't mean it's, we're not giving her money.
You can't give money back to somebody who hasn't paid it.
I, I agree.
But I think the point is, to get an abatement, you have to have applied for one, right?
I haven't seen the paperwork.
Okay. So, I would suggest we table it, then, and we'll do it clean next time. And it is accurate. Okay, so we're gonna table this to next meeting in the meantime.
Well, there's a motion to table, there has to be a second, there has to be a vote, Madam Chair.
Table, okay, we have a motion. Bill Boyd to table, anybody want a second?
I'll say.
Finley Rothaus? Yeah, well, this will be interesting. All those in favor of tabling until the next meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, any of those opposed? Okay, so it's 6-1-0, Tom Koenig opposing.
We only have one song now, so we don't have to defend the premium now.
I'm sorry, there's so much pattern, my lexicon now comes up. Okay. Right. Still weird. Okay, so... Okay, we already mentioned that the LED lighting is gonna be tabled to the next meeting, minutes.
Madam Chair, I move the Thursday, May 12th, 2016 Town Council meeting minutes as presented.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by...
Second.
Dan Dreyer, any changes?
Wow.
None?
Wow.
Wow, okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm going to abstain, so that's going to be 6-0-1, and I'm Nancy Harrington, abstaining. Okay. Comments from the press? Look at the crowd. Comments from the public? Same crowd. Comments from the council? Jody?
Thank you, Nancy. I have, I have two items. One, I wanted to ask about, we had the, a planning board annual review at our last meeting, and they had indicated, Chairman Best had indicated that there was some discussion regarding, basically, the, the current process, I don't know if ordinance or, I don't know what the correct term is, Tom, for sidewalks, with what they have to do now for sidewalks, what they're required to do when someone comes before them, what's, what's the word I'm searching for? It's, I don't know if it's a, built into their review process. Anyway, there's something that they have to do now, where people have to, it's the mitigation process where they pay money in lieu of the sidewalk.
What they can, they can apply for a waiver of the sidewalk requirement.
Right, right.
It's a requirement of the, of the regulations...
Right.
...that they do sidewalk, if they're making improvements to their property. They can apply for a waiver of that. If they don't get the waiver, they can apply to, to apply money towards a fund to be used in the region or the area for sidewalks, in lieu of putting sidewalks onto their property, or they can put sidewalks on the, on the street of the property.
Thank you, you put it much more eloquently than I would have. And he spoke to this fund where this money gets put into, that's kind of just sitting there and not being used, and then it goes back to the business that applied for this to begin with. So, he had indicated that the planning board had ideas about some changes they would like to make to this process, and they alluded to the fact that they'd like to come before the town council and make a presentation, and I said that I was interested in doing that, and Bob asked, well, how do we go about it? And I said, well, I will con, speak with the town manager and the chairman of the town council, because you were at that meeting, and ask if we could get it on a future agenda. Wow, that was a long way to get there, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, all we have to do is fill out that paperwork.
So, I, we could just...
Will contact Bill, will contact Bob Best?
Okay, that, that would be great, because I just, whether it was something that this body was interested in or not, if they clearly had some ideas they wanted to present, and I think...
Yes, Eileen?
I, I think one of the things that we have been lacking because of some kind of ambivalence between the two boards with regard to sidewalks, that we don't have a sidewalk master plan. So, if you don't have a, a master plan that's been adopted, you can't apply the money toward anything.
Okay. Well, it's, it's, I think... Well, it's, it's, I think-
Whatever the process is.
Right, they're worthy of hearing out. I mean, it's our Planning Board, so.
We're also holding some money and had to give some back, as they indicated.
Right, right. So, it's- Nothing can hurt from a discussion, right?
There's been nothing specific presented to us before. I know there's some general thoughts, but there's been no specifics as to where they wanna put the money. Oh, has they?
No, that's right. I thought you were talking about a master plan per se, that we're gonna do a, a study through with NRPC that was denied by the council, as I remember, a year and a half ago.
A plan, Finley, did you say?
That was actually having the NRPC do what they call the windshield study along DW Highway, which was something entirely, you know, that indicated something other than a sidewalk project around here. It's more, it kind of led us to, to assume that a plan would be put in place to put a sidewalk, sidewalk up the highway, on the DW Highway, even in the urban compact, and that was what many of the council members had a concern about, was that we would then be able to build sidewalks in the urban, outside the urban compact, and then have to maintain them.
I really don't know specifically what Bob was alluding to, but when he spoke, it was regarding the process that we have now, and changes that they would make to the process that we had now that would make more sense for, for the process when developers come before them and with their plans.
I heard him say that, yeah.
It's maybe a change in the language of the Planning Board, you think, Tom?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with it, because I was off the board for a year, to where they might be exactly right now. But I think it's, as he alluded to, they've been hesitant to try and take money in lieu, because they don't have a plan, they don't have anything they can easily go forward with and use that, and they're ending up giving it back, and it seems silly to hold it for three to five years when it's somebody else's money. So, they wanna try and, I think they wanna try and work that program into something different that's more readily or easily functional, whether it's the Planning Board that does it or the council that does it.
It will make a lot more sense than what they're doing now. That was the impression I got.
Yes, yes.
But I don't think they wanted to request an agenda item if we weren't receptive to at least hearing them out. That was the impression I got.
Personally, I would say, let me, give me a proposal to review. What would you like to do with the money? Would, would you like to be able to have the ability to use that money to use it in certain other sites where there's no sidewalk? I mean, I, I think that's the thing. There's been some generic overarching discussions about sidewalks in the town, and there's been pros and cons openly discussed, but there's never, to my memory, been a specific proposal related to that amount of money that's being not utilized and therefore being put back. If there's a proposal that we should, could consider, I, that's no problem.
Can we ask Eileen to reach out?
But if it stays generic, then that doesn't sound anything.
Sounds good.
That's, I just wanted to follow up on it, because it was out there, and I was interested in hearing what they had to say.
The only other thing that, and I, I don't know if this is feasible, Tom, because I don't, I don't know the law, and how keeping that sidewalk money and applying it across to other properties goes. But I think that it might be a good idea to take, to do a master plan in bits and parts, so it's not so-
Overwhelming.
It's so overwhelming to the, to the Town Council or to the townspeople, so maybe you might pick this town center area as, and do a master plan for sidewalks there. And if you could then apply that money, I'm not sure if you can or not, but it might not be such a huge undertaking, or, you know, trusting somebody to put sidewalks in where you might not put them, so.
Councilman Floyd, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't the Town Center Committee do that a couple of years ago? Put planning into place for sidewalks?
Yes. It's, I, I haven't examined that plan for, exactly for sidewalks, but there's two places that the Town Center Committee would, would want to put money, and had applied to the Chamber, a Chamber grant. And we were, you know, in, in, like, semifinalists, but didn't get it. There's the $400,000 grant that, that the town has received.
Right, but the federal government hasn't given us yet.
Well, because they don't have the funding yet. But we don't have to reapply, you know.
They do have the funding now, it was just passed, so we'll be getting it soon. Yeah, I just heard that today.
Yes, because we knew we wouldn't have to apply, that it would be sitting there waiting. And that would pay for, you know, the, the bridge area and the trail going under the bridge. Yep. And the Safe Routes to School Program also has money available to apply for, and we would like to either put a sidewalk on Woodbury Street or on, okay, simultaneous to the paving, a paving project that will be scheduled, I think, for '17, '18.
Well, see, that's an opportunity for three different groups to be able to work together, and there's some funding that's available through that, if they can use it. I mean, maybe it's legally, maybe it has to stay.
So, my understanding is, is funding that's taken from businesses in lieu of installing a sidewalk immediately has to be used in the region or the area of the business. It can't be used on the other side of town.
That's what it says, yes.
Okay, there's limitation there.
I think we're making some assumptions, too, about what it is they wanna come and present to us that we shouldn't be making, so possibly-
Which is what I would wanna know before-
Well, and that, that's why I'm asking if we can at least, at the very least, have Eileen reach out to Bob and, and talk about the viability of coming forward. That's-
And with what purpose? What's the, what's the hopeful outcome?
Right, because I, I personally don't know. I, I don't know what he was talking about.
And that example that's coming to mind, and I might be mixing story, stories, was Continental Boulevard and Industrial Park Drive, the new Dunkin' Donuts. You make a business guy pay for sidewalks where you're not gonna have a sidewalk in front of his store, because it's useless, and taking the funds that you would get from that person and go put it somewhere else. So, that's where I think, and I might be mixing whether it's that particular business owner or some other business owner, that's where some of the areas started to getting a little crazy, where it didn't seem right to be squeezing a business owner for sidewalks, so he pays for sidewalks that went across town, right? But I'm open, you know, they can, yeah, but to any proposal, if they wanna tweak, tweak the program to make it more feasible, then, you know, really willing to listen to it, of course.
Right, if it's supposed to represent costs associated with your doing business, the impact it's having on an intersection for a future traffic light possibly, or that type of thing.
Right.
So, since we're on sidewalks?
What?
It's my public, it's my council comment.
Perfect segue.
Well, of course, I got a call, and I know Councilman Boyd did as well, from the new owner of the Xylas property, and he has to put in a sidewalk, which he knew of. What his complaint is, and is there's a beautiful old tree, there's actually two, but one is a pretty good-sized tree, that he would love to keep, because it has added a tiny bit of character to an otherwise bland parking lot and brown commercial building. But the sidewalk was in his site plan, so his engineer was a meathead for putting it there by not recognizing the tree. I believe our community development should have also said, hey, if we can save this tree, maybe we should do that, since we're all about beautification, especially of our town center, and, and the Planning Board, I think, in their sidewalks or whatever you might do, maybe you didn't do a sidewalk on that site. But those things should be, we should take the time to recognize those things. Because right now, in order for him to leave that tree, he's gotta make another site plan change, so he's gotta hire his engineer, he's gotta make somebody present it to the Planning Board, and then he's gotta file it with whoever you file it with. And, and so, what otherwise, to me, seemed like a simple thing, it's not simple. And so, because it's not simple, in order to keep it simple, I want all eyes on the prize in trying to maintain things like that, so he can put his sidewalk around. And if his engineer didn't catch it, I'd love for community development to catch it and say, hey, why don't you try and do this? And if he wants to cut the tree down, then that's fine. At least we tried to save something that would enhance, to even a small degree, our town center. Yep, that's correct. Otherwise, that's it.
That's like, that's like-
So, once again, we're gonna force a guy to put in a sidewalk where there isn't a sidewalk to the left or the right of it, so he puts his money-
There is, there's a sidewalk.
There is?
Yes, in front of Dunkin' Donuts. He's, he now has a sidewalk, a marked area, in his parking lot, it goes across the front, which that surprised me a little, because I thought I would have expected curbing or something, but that's, it's there now. He delineated it, somebody did, a week or two ago. So, you have it from Dunkin' Donuts. The Town, the Town Center Committee is really desirous of having Church Street, not Church, yeah, Church?
Chapel? No, 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 Chapel.
Whatever that is, by the, by the adult community center.
Yes, the adult community center.
What is that? Anyhow.
That's supposed to bring up Church Street.
Okay, they want that closed, so they can put a sidewalk.
That's supposed to bring up Church Street. Don't bring that up.
Okay. All right, I don't know why. But, so anyhow, so that sidewalk would be not to nowhere. It's part of the, the plan and the desire to run it through, but anyhow. So, I'd like to keep it simple. I'd like it to just go around the tree, and if, if at some point it's gotta be straightened up, then we can do it.
So, during our retreat, we're gonna bring up the cost of buying some snowplows or sidewalks, right? Budgetary.
Right, because that is a problem, because I didn't know that you, if you have a sidewalk, you have to-
Just wondering, just make sure you keep that on your agenda.
If we're not mentioning Church Street, we sure don't wanna mention that.
That'll have to be an agenda, you know.
Yeah, oh, Eileen, I'm sorry.
Just one thing.
This was council comments.
Jody still has more to finish. This is a temporary subject.
I'm adding to the flavor of her commentary. So, I just would like to add that the Community Development Office would most definitely, had they seen something like that, or were made aware of that during the process, would have been very accommodating towards something like that. And if an engineer brings in something, it's a technical drawing, and it gets approved by the Planning Board, and it becomes, then it becomes a legal document. So, that has nothing to do with our Planning Board or anything. It's just, that's the way it is. And if the person's, if the person's engineer doesn't do the plan correctly, he should come, in my opinion, he should come back and do it for free. Fix it for free.
And I would agree with that. My only point is, it would be more beneficial, when you have an engineer who just wants to collect a check for his plans, it would be more beneficial as a community, if we really cared about it, which I believe we do, that community development would take the time to recognize these things, and, and the Planning Board. I mean, when we drive by, I'd probably be guilty of not even noticing myself, had it not been pointed out. But just, if we could notice those things, it'd be beneficial.
Okay, Jody?
Thank you. I just, I wanted to give you guys some updates from the Conservation Commission meeting on May 16th. Under our statutory business, we had Attorney Greg Michael come and speak regarding the hotel, which was interesting, because we saw this brand-new structure going up in the parking lot that exists now. And he, you know how he's so wishy-washy and not direct at all, Attorney Michael, was like, refused to speak about the existing structure to us, even though it wasn't, it's not under the purview of the Conservation Commission. But, yeah, we, we just asked some general questions about the structure, the, so you telling me that they're considering demolishing it is news to us, and that, that was interesting. Everybody wanted to know, well, we can talk about stormwater, because that's really with the Conservation Commission, that's the only thing they can address, and why you have to come before them. But we're very interested in what's going to happen with the existing structure, and, and he would not have it. So, that's interesting to know. Thank you, Eileen. The Conservation Commission, in spite of the NED project being suspended, now withdrawn, they just voted to move forward with the ecological assessment, the similar assessment that we did on our other conservation properties with the 283 Continental Boulevard location, which that's the location that the Conservation Commission refused. Finley had asked why. Because of the deed, we refused to allow them to serve, Kinder Morgan, to survey. There's a lot of water, wetlands, it's unique habitat. So, we decided, even though the pipeline project was no longer, that we were going to move forward, because after all, having an assessment of our conservation land here in town is a good, is a good thing, and, and worth, worth the money. The gate installation on Greater Woods has commenced. One, I believe, two of the gates are up. And I've been working with Eileen and Kyle on getting road closed signs. And the Chairman of the Conservation Commission, Tim Tenay, suggested that we don't lock the gates until those signs are ready and up, because we don't want the gates damaged. And then the Horse Hill Nature Preserve Parking Lot Project. We have a start date, I believe, May 31st is when there's going to be clearing, and I would say from May 31st until the hopeful completion date of July 1st, people should not be expecting to park their cars in that parking lot. The Watonic Bowman Parking Lot is available to people, and for, I know a lot of the mountain bike riders actually park at Wasserman and ride their bikes across, but effective 5/31, the Horse Hill Nature Preserve Parking Lot is not going to be a safe place for you to park your car if you're going to enjoy that property. I believe the Subcommittee is going to post signs. They're getting signs ready. They're going to put some signs up. The kiosk is going to have signs, and the Conservation Commission website is merimacoutdoors.org is going to have postings as well. But that's, that's a big announcement, because I'm sure it's still going to catch some people by surprise when they go to park there and they find all this equipment, so, thank you.
For how long? How long will that be?
May 31st, and the hopeful completion date is July 1st. Thank you, Nancy.
Bill? Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to recognize, I was in Tuesday's Telegraph. We had two Merimac students that traveled to Phoenix, Arizona, to participate in the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair that occurred out there. They went out there to, in the Embedded Systems category, present the applications of peristaltic pumping systems in chemistry laboratories. And what they've done is they've created this thing called a chemiCube, and it allows for accuracy in pouring chemicals from one particular container to a number, to a, to this particular device, so that when they're conducting experiments, it's extremely, it's precise. They finished in second place. They won a $1,500 cash prize boot, and an international committee will be naming two asteroids after these two young students, who are Matt Speedle and Sarah Mason. And I thought that was cool. One of the things that they said regarding the asteroids is that an international community will determine which asteroids will bear their names, taking care to choose the celestial bodies that will never impact Earth. I thought that, I thought that was neat. So, I wanted to congratulate Matt and Sarah for a job well done. And they're going to be connecting with another Merimac student, Emily Duval, and they're gonna be taking this chemiCube on the road next week to Durham at the UNH Biz Gen Competition, which is New Hampshire's version of the Shark Tank. So, I think that's really exciting, and I think it's, again, more good things that we hear about young kids doing in our community, kids going to the academy, athletics, and here's another, you know, you know, some practical application in the classroom, entrepreneurial, and taking it out and showcasing some of the best that our kids are, that are doing in our community. So, I couldn't be more, more happy for them, and I wish them the best of luck in UNH this weekend.
Bill, what is Matt's last name?
Speedle. S.P.E.T.T.E.L. And I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly.
Oh, okay.
So, Matt Speedle, Sarah Mason, and Emily Duval. Good luck this, good luck this weekend. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I just wanted to say that if anybody wants, now that the weather is good, to go on the trail and back of the fire station and along the river, the, the first, first, the second part, I guess, really, of the Sohegan River Trail. We just put a sign up, Joe Hurley, the sign maker, he has fabulous operation, too, by the way, of Wilson Hill Road, I think it is, not Amherst Road. It's a beautiful sign, partly paid for by the Park Service, other donations, and it wasn't horribly expensive to begin with, but it's a beautiful sign like you see in a national park, or we have one in Watson Park, too. Talking about Merrill's Marauders, and it's placed on the footbridge so that you can see the footbridge, you stand on the footbridge, see this tabletop-type sign, and look and, and see the bridge, the highway bridge, bearing their name, the Merrill's Marauders. It's a beautiful sign.
Very nice.
Yep, and I just wanna say nothing against anybody, that Greg Michael is an excellent lawyer, and he wants to protect his client. I just wanted to put a good word in for, for Greg stalwart citizen. That's all.
Specificity, that's what attorneys do. No more than what you need to know.
Just doing his job.
No gray, no gray area.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize, just one follow-up to my comment there. Their teacher was Sean, Sean Mueller. He served, Mueller, thank you. He served as advisor in the AP Chemistry class. He's the one that encouraged these students to create what they did. So, I wanted to recognize him and thank him for advising on the project.
Anyone else? Seeing none, now, yes.
Motion.
Just to, so that you don't think I'm not reporting on the Planning Board, they did not meet last week, and their next meeting is scheduled for June.
Excellent. Now, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn. Bill Boyd, second.
Second.
Dan Dreyer, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one opposes, I'm assuming. Good evening, everyone.